And good evening and welcome to the March 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. This time I'd like to ask you to please stand as we have a young lady from Black Fox, Sarah Arnold, if she will, to lead us in our pledge. Follow them by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. We welcome those of you that are with us tonight and those of you that are watching on the television. Glad to have you. Approval of the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you Ms. Reneer and Dr. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, I thought it was about time for an update about instructional technology. You'll remember that we had a massive undertaking of bringing our technology into schools with a two to one ratio of computers to children. And so I thought that it was time for us to have an update on that. So I'm going to turn this over to Karen Hawkins at this time.
Good evening. We, I wanted to bring you some information about some of the professional development that we've been doing with our technology. And we had a grant from Dell for some days of professional development. We started it last spring and then we've had two follow-up days during the year with a cohort of about forty to fifty teachers have had finished this, these four days of training. And the expectation was in this training is that they had learned some good information and then the expectation was that they would go back into their classroom and actually implement some of the things that they've learned. So we have, in our last meeting that we, we had, the teachers actually brought in some of their products that students created and talked about the project and what they had worked on. And so we asked some of our teachers from Black Fox to come and share one of their projects and just talk to you a little bit about that experience. And I think Trent Chiefs is going to work with them and so I'm going to ask Trent to come up and get us started there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing? I just wanted to start out by thanking you along with the city council for giving us those resources to use with kids. I know that being in the classroom myself several years ago, it was nice to know that I had five working computers to work with my kids and now we have double. So that's just exciting for me to be able to work with teachers and do that as well. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce two teachers that I worked with that, as Hawkins said, attended the training and they're going to share with you the process of what they went through both at Black Fox and during the training. So, you guys want to come on up? This is Jessica Cottaspotty and Kim Margatjack, both teach third grade at Black Fox.
As Mr. Chief said, I just want to thank you again on behalf of all of our teachers. We are so excited that you guys approved and helped us get the computers into our classroom. And we've had the opportunity to do a technology integration professional development over the past year. And we have learned so many different technology tools to infuse into the lessons that we teach every day. And we have tried several in our classrooms this year and our students are very excited and they have just loved using the technology and it's really enhanced learning in our classroom. So I'm going to let Ms. Cottaspotty talk a little bit more about a project we've been working on.
As Mrs. Margatjack and Ms. Hawkins said, we attended a training, about four of them. And we were then inviting Mr. Trent into our classroom and he came in and did a lesson with our students, about forty-five minutes on internet safety and how to conduct appropriate research. And then from there, Mrs. Margatjack and I worked on an instructional piece while Mr. Trent worked on the technology piece. And the students were able to work on their projects during downtimes in class, sometimes during interventions and during their snowcations when we had snow days. So I'm going to let Ms. Sarah Gwen come up and talk to you a little bit about her project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, Sarah's going to share with you exactly what she started with. She had a lot of choice as to the different methods of media that she could use and she actually used more than one. So I'm going to let her get started. What, what type of media did you use to build your first part of your project?
Well, I went on to many different websites to figure out how to exactly do it correctly and to find all that information.
Very good. What did you choose here? What, what piece of software are we using?
PowerPoint.
That's right. Did you use PowerPoint on the laptop when you started building it or did you have to go to another location? Do you remember us working together with some of the other kids?
Yes.
What did we talk about using instead of just using PowerPoint on the computer?
Office 365.
That's right. What, what does, what makes Office 365 special other than just playing PowerPoint? Where, where do we go when we get, when we get on Office 365? Okay, so is this on the computer or is this on the internet?
On the internet.
Okay, so what, how does that help us whenever we present or we show our project in class? Do we have to be on the same computer every time?
No.
Okay, so we just have to have what?
Internet.
The internet, that's right. So we can do that at home. We don't have to bring in a jump drive anywhere. We can basically just use that anywhere that we have internet and wireless. So as you can see, she stores several files there. And now she's going to show you her actual PowerPoint and give you a brief synopsis of a couple of slides that she worked on. And it's quite elaborate and I wish we had the time to show you that, but she's chosen a couple of slides to present to you tonight.
One of them is about one of the most famous pharaohs ever, Mr. King Tut, who was king at about age eight or nine and died when he was about eighteen. And he remains one of Egypt's greatest treasures. And he was also the sixteenth pharaoh of Egypt. And I've also done some things with mummies that I have done and it was really doing. The methods for treating the dead body is called mummification and they use a special process to remove all moisture from the body, leaving a dried form that will not decay easily. And Tut's sarcophagus was made of pure gold and he was discovered in nineteen twenty-two.
Talk to them about how when you finished your project, how you listed your references and how that, most people, just like you and I, remember in college, we would just list them, but what's special about yours? Are there any books there? Are there any books on the page there?
Yes.
They're all websites.
Yes, they're all websites.
They're all websites, that's right. So we use different kinds of media other than traditional stuff. Very good.
Do you have any questions?
I do. So you've gone into all of the third grade classes at Black Fox?
Well, it depends. Teachers usually approach me to do that. In some schools I'm able to work with every class. In some schools there are different ratios of kids. In this instance, there are about two to three per classroom and then sometimes teachers are only able to give me maybe one or two. It really depends on what they've got going that week, what unit of study, where they are, if they're higher achieving or lower achieving, it really doesn't matter. I work with all, the whole spectrum. So it just depends on the teacher in each grade.
Sarah, how long did it take you to do your project?
Probably about a month and a half or so.
You worked hard then. Did you work on it every day or take some breaks?
I did take some breaks, but I did work on a little information every day.
You are a fantastic student. We're so proud of you.
Sarah, how much work did you do at home and not at school?
Well, I did most of my pages at home with my parents who helped me find a little of the information that I used in my project.
Okay. Any other questions? Who's your grandfather?
Randall Shadoan.
That's what I thought.
Oh my goodness.
I bet he's going to watch you right now. What do you think? I bet he's very proud of his granddaughter. Thank you very much. A wonderful report.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And then today, Sarah Gwen had the opportunity to finish up her project. She went through, she got to become the teacher and she stood at the front of the room and gave her entire report on her entire project. And then our final component, she actually got to find a video online and create a video assessment that she could put questions in. And then that was the way that she assessed the students on her presentation. And then our, our goal moving forward is to have Sarah Gwen and the four students that we had working sit down with a buddy and work with that buddy and show that buddy what she learned. And then hopefully we can continue growing and end up with a classroom full of kids with technology.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you to the teachers.
I'm going to ask Kim, would you come up to the podium one more time, please? Because I think, I think it's important to hear from you about this specific thing. Talk to us about how this has changed, how this has changed student engagement, how this has changed your teaching and what you're seeing from your students, if you don't mind, please.
Sure. I just think that in the day and age that we live in, it's so technology infused for these kids at home, to have this tool in the classroom to really be on their level and engage them in instruction is just powerful and incredible. And it makes my lessons come to life. It makes the students really excited to learn. A few of the tools, one of my favorite technology tools we learned was called Kahoot. And anytime I say Kahoot in my class, they get so excited. And it's just made learning a lot of fun and especially, you know, as we prepare for different assessments that we're able to use these tools to make it fun and they just really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
It's great.
And we did learn last Friday, I guess, that the assessment next year will be online. So we will be taking it online. I had thought that we would have a choice of paper pencil or online, but we will not. And so it is a very good thing that we moved to having the technology that we have now. And I just thank teachers like these two for, for that. And I have to say that Sarah Gwen, when your mother was about your age, I was teaching her piano. And I remember very much when Mr. Shadoan was here with us in the city. He was one of the lead, one of the lead tech teachers at that time. So very much appreciate your being here and, and your mother being here too. As far as other communications, I'm very pleased to let you know that Irma Siegel's Angela Pope has been chosen as Channel Two News Educator of the Week and Erin Wilson has been chosen as BoroughFamily.com's Educator of the Month. So congratulations to those two teachers. Also today, we just learned that Rebecca Few has been selected as a math coach. So she will again be a math coach this summer for grades three through five for the state. So congratulations to her. And in addition to that, Sarah Catalano has been working for a consulting coach for the early grades for summer training. So Sarah is really developing, helping develop the training that these teachers will have this summer. So we're blessed to have such direct contact with the instruction that our teachers will need to know. That's, that's a real advantage for our district. Mitchell Nelson Principal Robin Newell extends congratulations to Matt Couch, who was one of only seven special education teachers to be accepted into Vanderbilt's Intensive Intervention Program. This program prepares master's level professionals to teach students who have persistent and severe learning and behavioral problems. So Robin has already said that we're looking forward to when he returns to Murfreesboro City with the knowledge that he has. Mitchell Nelson would also like to thank New Vision Baptist Church, the Sunday School Class of Brennan Mangus and David Bay for the job they did with refurbishing the front landscaping at the elementary school campus. Bradley would like to give a thank you to the new sponsor Kroger on Middle Tennessee Boulevard for their support and donation. And then we want to also thank the Walmart that opened on South Church for their gift of a thousand dollars to the Indigenous Children's Care Fund. Couple of announcements, we are having this Thursday evening at Mitchell Nelson, the Just Me and My Dad Fair. This is a partnership with Reed to Succeed and that will be Thursday, late Thursday afternoon. There's more information about that on the website. Spring break is next week and I think everybody in town knows that, but just a reminder about that. And then we will be having a job fair on April the 11th. It will actually be a virtual job fair and an actual job fair. April the 11th from nine until eleven thirty at Overall Creek. It will be very similar to what we've been having as far as we do encourage folks who are interested in joining our district to come and have resumes ready and to have interviews. But we will also be having a virtual job fair. So the HR department has sent out to various universities around the state and outside of the state. And our principals will be interviewing virtually people who want to come work here. So I think that's very exciting and a, and a good addition for us. And those are your communications for this month.
I'd like to take just a moment, another communication. And a young lady by the name of Ella Phillips, who is a fifth grade student at Discovery School, has done an outstanding job of singing the National Anthem for all of the Middle Tennessee women's basketball team WNIT games. And my understanding is that she will continue to be there until they lose. So we hope she's going to be there at least three more times, maybe four. Okay? But I do congratulate her. She does a fantastic job on the National Anthem. All right. Consent items? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Reneer.
Second.
Second, Dr. Brown. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And none. All right, action items?
Your action item is textbook adoption and as she comes forward, I want to thank Karen Hawkins for leading that, that job. And she does a great job with that. She brings in teachers and they spend a lot of time looking over textbooks. And so she is reporting out to you tonight.
On the agenda, we have recommendations for two textbooks. Last year, we, during the past school year, we looked at social studies adoption. And we had just, the state had just adopted new social studies standards for them to be implemented this year. And the teachers looked at the materials, but we had thought that there might be some additional resources that would be, had been available this year. But as it turned out, these are the ones that were on the list at the state. We only had one choice for kindergarten through third grade and that is the American Legacy Social Studies Weekly. So for K-2, that would be our recommendation. That is, and then for grades three, grade three, American Legacy World Community Consumable Third Grade. So this is a weekly newspaper that comes. It's aligned to the Tennessee standard, so it wouldn't be a hardback book. And it's going to give the teachers resources that they need to teach the new social studies curriculum content. In grades four and five, they had a choice between the Social Studies Weekly, the American Legacy, and then the Gibbs Smith Publishers. They've rearranged the standards a little bit. So fourth grade works through Tennessee history, the early years. And then fifth grade, the same thing through later years. That's, that's a textbook that we are recommending as well. And then in grade six, the Prentice Hall, My World History and Geography, Early Civilizations Through the Decline of the Roman Empire in Tennessee. That would be the recommendation for sixth grade. We actually had two choices for that. We, there's also an organization called Tennessee History for Kids that has published some supplemental materials for social studies. There are booklets that are designed especially for Tennessee that focus on the standards. And we hope to use some of those resources along with these for our social studies curriculum. So that's the social studies. For math, we worked on that this year and we're recommending kindergarten through grade six, the textbook, the textbook resource Curriculum Associates. And it's called Tennessee Ready Mathematics. This would be our primary recommendation. This, the math was a little bit tricky this year because of the idea that we may have some new standards. And many of the vendors had consumable products that they produce for us, which is really, could be a good thing for our students because rather than having a textbook and a consumable product, they'll have consumable products. And the vendors, and particularly this vendor, Curriculum Associates, has given us a money-back guarantee that if the standards change after the first year, then we can, either they will adjust the curriculum for us so that it matches the new standards or they'll refund our money for the remaining five years and then we can use that to purchase something else. So our teachers felt that this was a strong curriculum. We really had good choices. I mean, I can come to you and say, we looked at four good choices for our district. And this one, when we voted on it, I didn't know how it was going to turn out. But we had thirty participants on the committee and we only had two people on the committee that voted for something else. So everyone was really excited. It was a strong recommendation for this particular curriculum. This curriculum also comes with a technology component. It's called iReady. And what students will do is they will go in, it gives them an assessment and then it assigns curriculum based on their level. The teachers were really excited that this could be something that they could use for intervention and for enrichment for students that we wanted to accelerate because this curriculum goes all the way up through middle school. So it's a product that they were excited about, that technology component as well. So that's, that's their recommendation for that. There's also a product that we, we considered and it's called Eureka Math. It's this, this is published by a company that's a nonprofit company. It's, all of the resources are online, so teachers can go online. And if there are activities that they want to use as a supplement, they can print those off and use them. Knowing full well that our main curriculum is going to be the Tennessee Ready, they felt like that this would be something that they could use for supplement and it's free of charge. So we, we looked at it. We considered it for our primary curriculum. But I was not willing to put teachers in front of a copy machine, making copies for an entire curriculum. I told them that their principals probably would kill me and probably should if that happened. And the print resources, because this company just doesn't have the capacity, were very expensive. But going in and picking a few, some activities, they liked it because of the rigor and they felt like it was, would be a good supplement. So this would be our recommendations from the committee. I want to congratulate this committee that worked so hard. They came to the meetings, they listened to all the vendors, they went back and talked to their teachers and got input. And I feel like that they have a really strong recommendation for us going forward.
Have any questions? Okay, Ms. Reneer and then Ms. Smith?
My question is not a big question. When you got to the fourth and fifth grade, you said there was a choice of the American Legacy or what was the other one?
The, the one that they actually selected, which would be, oh no, it would be the, the weekly, the American, the Studies Weekly.
Studies Weekly.
And that would be the weekly newsletter, social studies content. They felt like that for their grade level and the kind of things that their students were going to be asked to do on the state assessment, that this was a better selection for them.
So this is different than the American Legacy? But it's also a weekly type?
This is a book. This is an actual traditional textbook for fourth, fifth and sixth.
Text. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I have a few comments. One is I actually spoke to a member today of one of the textbook committees and he, I appreciate anyone that served on one of those committees. That takes a lot of effort. But he seemed to get a lot out of participating in it as well. Did find it a little challenging considering that we don't know exactly where we're going with curriculum. But I do appreciate the teachers taking that time out and, and you're doing so as well. I have a few questions. The sixth grade, we talked about before, was there any coordination on that with the county?
The county actually adopted all of the textbooks. So they didn't, they just adopted everything on the list and chose to wait to see what was going to happen with the standards. And originally I thought that that might be what we would recommend, to be honest. But then when we looked at the materials and we saw how strong they were and we have a commitment that they will change with us, I felt like that next year, when we have to take an assessment in February, that we needed the major content of that curriculum taught by February and all of these resources do that for us. So we, we opted to go with a recommendation.
And so what I like about the current social studies textbook and the science textbooks is that it has the breakout, like the most important issues in a chapter and then it has the TCAP coverage at the end. So, and is that, even though we, is that kind of thing included in these textbooks?
I think that the way that it approaches the content is going to match our standards in a much better way. Because our students on the social studies assessment, and we're going to actually have a pilot on that in the spring, they're going to have to write responses. They're going to have to write, read text and write responses about that text. So it's going to look very different. We're going to have some multiple choice, but a lot of it is going to be written expression. And we looked at the curriculum that would prepare our students best to meet those standards. There's a lot of literacy standards that are tied to the social studies work as well. So yes, it does break it down. It addresses our standards. It meets those much better than the current books that we have now. And in third grade, the social studies standards, they completely changed. We went from teaching Tennessee history and learning about Tennessee to world geography in third grade. So their current resources, they're not even close to what they'll need to address these standards in the future.
And so are there, I mean, I know you mentioned it on the math, but on the social studies textbooks, are there, is there an online textbook that the kids may access?
There are online, there's online access for all of these materials.
That's, I, when my children have tests, I find that it's great for them to read the chapter and then go online and sometimes have it read to them. I just think that's a great opportunity, resource to kind of double do it.
So there are online resources for these.
That you're right.
And in fact, the Social Studies Weekly, you can actually look at those on an iPad. So classroom teachers can log in and actually see them there.
We're beginning to see some of the textbooks be online, but we're still not to that point yet. Especially at our grade level, that, that you're going to find the textbook actually online. You're going to find- You're going to find some of those more in your upper grades, but you're not going to get that with here.
The children's, some of the textbooks are definitely online now, though.
They are.
Yeah, they are. But we're not, I think there's the feeling that because, because so many things are online now, and so many textbooks are online, and so many books are online, that we've reached that point, that it may be more cost-effective to go with online textbooks, or you might be able to find all the textbooks we need online, and we're just not there yet. I think we will be.
There are online, yes.
No, I'm thinking, for me, it's a reinforcement of the physical.
It's a resource.
Resource, anyway. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Barrett?
I know we just talked about our public comment policy for textbooks. Did we have, was this open for public comment, and did we have any?
We were, we actually advertised in the paper, it was on our website, and we did not have any parents come to, our community members come look at the math textbooks. Because we had, we had an opportunity for them to give feedback, and they were set up in the multipurpose room, but we did not have folks come look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? All right. We need a motion to approve the adoption.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Second by Ms. Barrett. Is this for both math and?
Yes, it is.
Social studies?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And of course, there is none. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Our next item is our travel expense policies. I know that Ms. Baker has done extensive work on this. What I'm going to ask you to do is let Ms. Baker explain what we have, because we have discussed these policies several times. Write down your questions, and I promise we'll get everybody's questions asked, answered, before we do a final vote. But I know Ms. Baker's been hard at work at it, and certainly do appreciate. This draft is for discussion, correctly? Okay. Not ready to be voted on tonight?
Unless someone, unless the body feels I actually captured all of the input that I gained from the retreat.
Okay. All right. Good luck.
As you recall, we have two policies. Board Policy BO43, which is called the Travel Expense Policy. This is the policy that covers all employees and board members' generic requests for travel expense reimbursements. So this is the policy that covers employees and board members. Now, then you have Policy BO44, which is the policy that deals specifically with reimbursement of expenses for Murfreesboro City School Board members. Okay? So first, I'll start with Board Policy BO43, the Travel Expense Policy. In addition to the comments and input that I received during the retreat and the prior meeting, I also updated a few of the sections based on some revisions that we had recently made to the city's travel reimbursement policy, which your current policy follows almost verbatim. And it's some revisions that, for example, before, we didn't talk about an employee getting reimbursed if they had to pay for internet connection when they were at a conference or a hotel. And I, so I added some language to deal with that. So I gave you a tracked version that would show all of the additions that I, or changes I made to the current policy. In Section A, it indicates that the reimbursement will be based on the actual cost or a per diem rate, depending on the type of expense, and all expenses must be reasonable. And then in Section B, I clarified there in line 12, that travel involving overnight stay or mileage in excess of fifty miles one way must be approved in advance by the Director of Schools. And I inserted the word employee, because the board had discussed the fact that they didn't necessarily want to put the director in the position of having to approve board travel. So I put the word employee there to clarify that the directors reviewing employee travel, not board member travel. So that's why that section was added. And then I added, based on Mr. Campbell's input, line 19, to clarify that employee travel that is less than fifty miles one way does not require prior approval. And that's so every time an employee is going to a conference closer to Murfreesboro, that they're not constantly have to get the prior approval from the director. I'm sure they go through their principal, and there's another process that Mr. Anderson may be able to explain as far as when employees are putting in for reimbursement, if they have to go to a conference at MTSU or Vanderbilt, or something of that nature. Let's see. Then you'll see that I added in Section C, which deals with the procedure for reimbursement for travel expenses. At the end, I added the flexibility of a designee to be allowed to approve reimbursements. Right now, before, it read just the director and the Finance Administrative Services Director. I thought there needed to be that flexibility, based on just the way that it probably works in actuality, that sometimes if either of them aren't available, they may have designated someone to review those items for reimbursement. And if any of this is incorrect, Mr. Anderson, Dr. Gilbert, please speak up and tell us how it actually is working. Okay, then you'll see on the next page, in line 65, this is where, this was a change to kind of try to update it based on now the way the airplane tickets are. Very seldom do we have airline ticket stubs anymore. A lot of it's electronic, so this is to provide that flexibility for the employee or the board member to print out whatever documentation they have that can help prove the flight, the cost of the flight to seek reimbursement. Also, there's a typo in line 58 that isn't reflected in the policy you're looking at right now. The word saving needs an S on the end. Then in line four, Section Four, line 93, about rental cars, the original policy did not address some of the issues that apparently have come up, both in the city, and I would assume it may have happened in the school system as well. Now, these car rental companies have all kinds of extra insurance that you can buy. In our policies, we require employees to purchase collision and liability insurance, and that's what will reimburse the employee for purchasing if they get a rental car. However, if they buy anything above and beyond the collision and liability insurance, they're not going to get reimbursed for those extras they may buy, that are above and beyond what's required for them to buy under our policy. And so that's what the next line states. It says, "The employee shall not be reimbursed for any additional insurance purchased," and that I need to add, "de there, purchased from the car rental agency above and beyond the collision or liability insurance required under this policy." And so that, that's the intent of that sentence, to deal with that issue. Okay, next is Section Five, that deals with Murfreesboro City Provided Transportation. This, I've just seen this issue arise in other situations, and it would be helpful to add, is in a situation where possibly the city schools is providing transportation to a seminar or a conference. For example, they've rented a van, or they've chartered a bus to take employees there, or they're using a school bus to take employees or staff to the conference. If the employee chooses not to utilize the school-provided transportation, they would not get their mileage reimbursement. And so that's, that's the intent of that clause five. Then, on the next page, in G, it's been revised to, the prior language indicated that the school board would, from time to time, determine the per diem rate for meals. And traditionally, the board is always deferred to the federal rate that is used, and that's what the city uses as well. And so to save you the trouble of having to periodically review and revise that clause, I inserted the language that the per diem rate in meal schedule shall be that used by federal employees, and it's called the CONUS rate. And I inserted the link to the section. I also included in your packet a copy of the actual CONUS rate. It breaks down by city, in telling what the meal rate would be by city, based on breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Then you'll see in Section Eight, Regarding Communication, that last line was revised to deal with that Wi-Fi access and getting reimbursed on that. And as far as smartphones, that the employee shall also be reimbursed for charges for internet or Wi-Fi access while on official travel, if such access was necessary to conduct Murfreesboro City School business. Employees shall not incur such charges if alternative sufficiently secure access is available, or if the access is for personal use or convenience. And then Section I, Regarding Tips, it was revised based on some changes in the city policy as well. It, before, it was rather detailed in how the tips would be handled, so it was, I revised it there to say, but meal tips would not be included in reimbursement, because we're going off the per diem rate, and the per diem rate apparently already incorporates and considers tips for meals. So under a per diem rate, you don't get reimbursed for tips that you leave at meals. Okay, and then the last change, which was the change resulting from your retreat and your input, is on Page Five, Section N, starting at line 211. It's where I clarify that all provisions of this travel expense policy shall also apply to the Murfreesboro City School Board and members traveling on Murfreesboro City School Business, with the exception that travel reimbursement request shall be sent to the Finance Administration Services Director for approval, rather than the Director of Schools. The Finance Administrative Services Director shall review the request to ensure compliance with board policies, and that adequate funds exist in the board budget for the requested amount. That is the language I put, because I took it that your discussion was, you wanted Mr. Anderson to just look and see if it met, if there was enough in the budget to cover the expense. And then I added, ensure compliance with board policies, to mean that you were following the rules that are set forth in this particular policy, because this policy says, you know, you don't sign up for, you don't buy the first-class ticket. You've got to get the most affordable ticket, and try to get your ticket reasonable amount of time ahead, so that you're, you're not getting stuck with the most expensive tickets out there. So I assume that you would want him to also make sure that only reimburse you for those expenses that really followed the rules that are set forth in this policy. If I was wrong in making that assumption, y'all need to let me know how you'd want that revised. The next policy is the Board Policy BO43. Do you want me to stop on that one?
Can we stop? Let me, would you please go and explain the per diem?
Okay.
Part of it, I know it's, we have it listed, but just so we'll know before we get into discussion on BO43.
Okay. Per diem rate is something that the state uses, the federal government uses, where they have actually, if you'll turn, let me show them these. It's the last, it's the last document, it's behind BO44, and it starts at the top, travel for October 1, 2014, through September 30, 2015. What they do is they break down how much you would get reimbursed for all your meals that day and incidentals. Incidentals is meant to cover the tips. And so it tells you how much you would get reimbursed. It also breaks it down by breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And then it, for example, in Brentwood, if you go to meetings in Brentwood, they say the per diem rate for Brentwood is fifty-six dollars. So if you look back up at the top, they calculate that a breakfast in Brentwood's nine dollars, a lunch is thirteen, and a dinner's twenty-nine. So rather than keeping your receipts and turning in your receipt for what was actually spent, you just get reimbursed the per diem rate. Now, if you're at a meeting where lunch is provided, you will not get reimbursed for that lunch, because it was provided as part of the cost of the meeting. But if you had to, if you had to be at the meeting, if you look here, if you had to be at the meeting before five, between 5:30 and 8:30 a.m., then you get reimbursed for breakfast. But if you didn't have to show up at the meeting until nine o'clock, you're not going to get reimbursed for breakfast. And you'll see, if you leave the meeting before 5:30, you don't get reimbursed for dinner. But if it's a meeting where you had to stay until after, say, eight o'clock at night, you would get reimbursed for dinner. And so they've broken down the main cities. There on that front page, you can see, they've got Brentwood, Chattanooga, Knoxville, Memphis, Nashville, Oak Ridge. And then by state, they've broken down, broken it down by state with some of the, and when you go online, you can find pretty much every major city that would be holding some sort of a conference on there. And so that's how they will calculate your per diem rate. Okay?
All right. Now, we have questions on BO43. I know Dr. Brown did, and then we'll go, just whoever. Dr. Brown?
Section Five, where it talks about MCS provided transportation. We specifically said out-of-state conference, but I could envision a conference in Knoxville where Murfreesboro City Schools would provide transportation. So do we want to leave that out-of-state in there, or just say conference where MCS is providing transportation?
I can revise that, that's.
Okay. And where are you?
Section Five, Murfreesboro City Schools Provided Transportation. And the second line, travel together to attend an out-of-state conference. But if there's a conference in Knoxville, and the Murfreesboro City Schools rents a bus to take seven people over there, everybody should ride the bus or not be reimbursed.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Other questions?
Well, we mentioned, what was not in here?
It's in the forty-four.
You did put it in there, okay.
It's in forty.
Thank you.
Ms. King?
Hi. I'm going to mention this. You probably already know, but later on, you'd mentioned that the word savings needed an S, but you didn't mention, it's actually in lines three and four, the very beginning. I noticed in line three, "All such expenses must be reasonable," is red, and then literally in line four, "All such expenses must be reasonable," in some black. I didn't know if that was a typo when we missed that.
Thank you. I think that's a tracking issue.
Okay. All right. But I didn't know, wanted to bring that. And then I forgot where, okay, line 22, within fourteen days. I would recommend adding the word calendar or business.
Okay.
You know, I can turn it in any of the fourteen calendar days or business days.
And I'll defer to Mr. Anderson, which he prefers for his office.
Just to avoid confusion, is my suggestion.
I'd say calendar.
It doesn't matter to me, calendar is appropriate, because it means two weeks. I think that's why I was setting fourteen, rather than ten or fifteen.
Okay.
And if that's not done, we don't get reimbursed. Is that the way it is? Okay. Ms. Barrett?
Checkbag fee for air travel, did I see that in there? Are we not doing it? I just took an airplane flight, that's what I was asking.
What, what'd you say?
Checkbag fee, you know, you go to airport, you check your bag, they charge you a fee. I didn't, I don't think I saw that in there. I didn't know if we were going to reimburse for that or not.
I don't think it's addressed. I'm not sure what our practice is.
Okay.
Well, there's baggage handling.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah, it's up on line.
It's okay. There you go. It's got, it got buried.
Forty-two's baggage handling.
No problem. Thank you.
You may have, I may have missed this. And we'll use Nashville as an example. I think Nashville was a sixty-six-dollar city. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I go to Nashville, and Nashville is a sixty-six-dollar city. If I spend sixty dollars... If I spend $60, I'm going to get reimbursed $66?
Yes. And...
I kind of, I thought maybe I had to return, turn in my stuff anyway, and I would get reimbursed what I spent, 60 bucks. But I try, if I went over 66, that's all I got was 66.
And it's been my experience going to conferences, especially out-of-state conferences, is usually you wind up spending a lot more on some of the meals, like say, the dinners, than you maybe spend on your breakfast. So getting the per diems, it kind of all works out in the end.
Okay.
The per diem kind of covers you in the end.
Okay.
Because you may have spent, you know, $2 for breakfast or not even eating breakfast, but spend, you know, five or six extra dollars at dinner, and it covers itself.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on BO 43? Thank you, Kelly. Well done. All right, BO 44.
Okay, so BO 44, this is the policy that specifically deals with the reimbursement of the school board. And before I start going through this, based on your conversations at the retreat, it was my impression that you wanted each board member in the budget to be allotted a set amount of funds for travel reimbursement, which would encompass your conferences and the reimbursements for the travel associated with going to the conference. And then you also indicated that you wanted a pool of money that could be utilized to reimburse board members for traveling to the national conference. So that's how I tried to approach this, and I'm not sure if I got everyone's input in the way that you wanted, so please let me know. There, so in Clause B at Line 15, reimbursement funds is what I titled it, and it indicated that in the budget, each board member will be allocated equally a set amount of funds for reimbursement of board-related expenses each fiscal year. The designated reimbursement amount shall be determined, sorry for the typos, by the board annually during the budget review process. So I anticipated that during the budget, you would determine how many, say, TSB conferences you expected each board member to go to, and you would make an estimate of what that cost would be for each individual board member. These designated funds shall be utilized for reimbursement of any board-related expenses incurred by a board member, including but not limited to travel, meals, parking, seminar fees, hotel fees. I can change that to lodging fees. And then additionally, the board shall allocate a pool of funds which may be utilized by any board member for reimbursement of board-related expenses related to attendance at a national conference regarding educational-related issues. Now that, I said national conference regarding educational-related issues. I didn't know if you wanted me to narrow the scope of the type of national conference in that way. I made that assumption, so if that was incorrect, let me know.
Sounds good.
In order for a board member to be eligible to utilize the pooled expense funds, the board member must have exhausted their individual expense funds and have been selected by the board to attend the national conference in accordance with the process set forth in Section C. I didn't know if you wanted those individual funds to be exhausted before you went to the pooled funds, so I put that in there for y'all to discuss and revise as you felt needed. Now, Section C is where I tried, tried to capture how you wanted the pooled funds, how you wanted it to be determined who got to access the pooled funds. I know there was a lot of different ideas thrown out there, so this is what I landed on. At least 30 days prior to the deadline for the early or discounted registration for a national conference, and I use the early or discounted registration, I believe there was some mention that we really wanted to try to take advantage of that, if at all possible. Related to, national conference related to education, all board members interested in attending shall inform the board secretary of their interest in writing. And I indicated it needed to be in writing so that it was easier for the board secretary to keep track of rather than just phone calls or passing conversations. At the next regularly scheduled board meeting, the board chair shall randomly select an agreed-upon number of names which meets the budgeted amount for attending the national conference. However, someone that has attended the national conference the prior year shall not be eligible to attend unless no other members are interested and sufficient funds exist in the budget. Okay, that's what I came up with based on y'all's conversation. It's up to y'all to revise it if you had different ideas. And then the last paragraph H that starts at Line 66, this is the paragraph where I tried to indicate your desire that the Finance Administrative Services Director would be responsible for review and approval of board member expense requests, and that they would be reviewing those requests to see if there were sufficient funds in the budget to pay the request, and that the requests were otherwise in compliance with board policy. So, and then, this is what Ms. Smith noted I needed to add, that board member expenses shall be listed on the consent agenda for informational purposes only. And that was part of y'all's discussion, that you wanted some reflection and transparency of what those expenses were by placing it on the consent part of the agenda. I wasn't sure if you wanted it under communications rather than consent because consent indicates that there would be a vote taken on it. So you may want it moved to communications if it's just strictly for informational purposes. But I was going to leave that up to y'all to clarify how you want that done. And so that's what I came up with based on your retreat discussion.
I have a suggestion that when we go to allot each board member X number of dollars, whatever, at the end of the year, so to speak, like when national conference comes up, if board members have not used that individual allotted money, that then that money could be transferred into the pool money in case we wanted to have, in case we had three people who wanted to go to a convention or a meeting, we would have the money left over from the individual. I don't know if that's possible or not. Kelly, that's something that you would. And then we will need to think when we develop this budget, like you say, the number of training sessions that we're going to go to with TSBA in Nashville, that we all go to every year. And I'm sure that Mr. Anderson will include that sort of thing into the monies that he budgeted. Okay, now, Ms. Renee?
I just, you have done a fantastic job on this.
There you have it.
You hit every point that we talked about. I just have a question, and it doesn't say NSBA, but Line 21 and 29, when you talk about national conference, I think that this is appropriate because it does not say NSBA because there are other national conferences available. For instance, when I was there, they talked about a conference on poverty. They talked, like a national conference, oh, hello, National Conference on Poverty. They talked about the National Cube Conference. So there are any number of other things out there besides NSBA. So I wasn't sure. At first, when I saw national, I went back to NSBA. So I think that the way you have that, it leaves it open to everything, correct?
And that's why I intentionally didn't use any one organization. I tried to make it as broad as possible in case there were other national conferences that dealt with education. I know there's an organization that does a lot of special education conferences, a really, a really well-known national conference. So that's why I left it intentionally broad to try to cover those others.
I think that's great. I think that's the way it should be.
Other comments?
I think it's amazing what you've done.
It really is.
You've done a very good job, Kelly. We're very appreciative of the work that you have done.
That's because we have the best attorney around for any school system, right?
I agree. Dr. Brown?
I think it's important to go back to why we discussed this in the first place, and that is, as a board, we want to be physically responsible for the expenses that we incur and have those expenses where it's not behind the scene, it's out in the open where people can look at it and realize that we're trying to spend the money very wisely and have as much money as possible go for the students and the teachers and the system.
Point well made. Other comments, suggestions? Ms. Renee?
I guess my suggestion would be if the discussion seems as though we're at a nice level, perhaps we're ready to approve these. So I will go ahead, we would need to do them individually, correct? I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve BO 43.
All right. Do we have a second to Ms. Renee's motion?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now, do we have any discussion on the motions?
I assume the motion takes into account the discussion we had after, that the BO 43 would include what minor changes would be needed.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Renee?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Chair Campbell?
Yes, ma'am. All right, motion passes unanimously. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Seeing that we seem to be okay with everything here with a few minor changes, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve BO 44.
All right.
A second, the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Now, discussion on the motion.
Go ahead.
Dr. Brown?
Just one minor point in Line 32, where it says an agreed-upon number of names. I would phrase that as agreed-upon number of board members.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Smith?
I don't think that we have resolved the question about how it, if it's not on the consent item, on the consent agenda versus the communications agenda, and are we voting on it, or is it just a reporting of what was spent? I think, I think the concept was that it was a reporting of what was spent versus board members voting in advance.
Communication.
So it should be, so the thought is that it would be in the communications, board expenses would be under communications, but...
I can rephrase that to reflect that it's under the communications section of the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion on policy BO 44? Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Renee?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
And Chair Campbell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Again, we'll say thank you to Kelly Baker for the work she has done, and also thank you to the board members because we have discussed this many, many times, and it's good to have a policy that we all agree on and can go forth with. All right. I guess we're ready for revenue? Wait a minute, let me get back up to my agenda.
Resolution.
Where am I? Okay. Resolution opposing vouchers.
Mr. Barrett, do you want to address this?
Yeah, I will. Since it seems to be flying through the legislature and it's going to take a lot of, I feel like a lot of money out of our public schools, I wanted to get it in writing that we're opposed to this. And we've never asked for vouchers to our legislators, but they continuously think that we want them. So I wanted to just get it out there in writing and in public that we're opposed to that and hope that they can consider that going forward.
Has everybody seen the resolution that was sent out in our packet? Have you looked at it and read it?
Yes.
Have you any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Smith?
I'm pleased that we are doing it. I think that it is very important that our legislators understand that it, a lot of voters feel the same way that we do, that vouchers will take away from our public school educations, and that we can back this up.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Barrett?
And the lack of accountability. There's, with these vouchers, the ones that they have proposed right now, there's just no accountability. Right now, we're the accountability, the board is the accountability, the state's the accountability, but under this system, they're just going to give it to private schools, and they have, there's no accountability for where that money's spent, who's spending it, spending it on what. So I hope they consider that with our resolution tonight.
Has the, do you know if, in the discussion of vouchers, I know we have discussed it, but in the process, when we give a voucher and a child leaves us and goes to a private school with that voucher, and then the money goes with that child, but then if the child is removed from the private school, does the money go back to the public school that they enroll in? You know? Anybody?
Not till the end of the...
I don't know either.
State money follows the student.
So if the student goes from us first, we get the proportion of money that they would have if they were here. If they go then to another school, the money goes there. If they come back to us, the money comes back to us while the time they're there.
Okay, all right.
But if they go on elsewhere, it just follows the student?
Right, we don't get any of it.
I will also note that several of us are very concerned about our special needs students. The student, the receiving school is not required to provide services for that student outside of what they already provide. There's an additional voucher bill that is really just for students with IEPs, and I have serious concerns about that particular voucher bill, too. So I hope that the public looks carefully at what is being said and what the effects are. And I know that I will speak for the teachers and staff for thanking you for taking the stand against vouchers because it absolutely will impact our schools, and anyone who thinks it is not going to impact, whether it be County or Murfreesboro City, I think really has their head in the sand.
I think we continue to hear from our legislators, those that we talk to, and I'm sure you've heard the same thing that I have, you know, well, it's not going to affect you because you're not in that lower 5% and all that. But I think eventually that it will, and it just bothers me sometimes that where you see a legislator vote in a committee in favor of something and is quoted as saying, you know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not too sure about that. But then they go right ahead and vote, and that bothers me. And I did contact that one, we discussed it openly. So anyway, I would encourage you at the same time to contact as many of these legislators as possible. I think perhaps, well, certainly the two in the Senate that we're closely associated with, I guess.
Were you saying, when you said you, do you mean the seven of us, or are you talking to the families at home?
I'm talking about everybody.
They also need to be contacting the legislators?
They do, they do, and they need to become involved because the rules and the regulations that are being decided upon today and the next couple of weeks are going to affect all the children that go into Murfreesboro City Schools for a long time.
Yes.
As well as Rutherford County Schools.
That's right.
As well as private schools, I guess, to a certain degree.
I think there's a real fallacy, and Mr. Anderson and I have discussed this, but there's a real fallacy of some people who think that with vouchers, it really will help us as far as building, but that is absolutely untrue. To remove five students from a class... from a classroom, we still have that teacher, we still have that room, and we still have responsibility, I think, for that child, because public schools happen to be the one entity that really are responsible for educating children. And so we've already seen what happens when students go away from us to a virtual school, for example, and sometimes to homeschool, although there's some excellent homeschools, and come back to us. And I don't want to see the same thing happen, and there's just no guarantee. The students are, and some of the bills are responsible for taking the achievement test, but they're only the students who have the vouchers. It is not the entire school. And so when our schools are compared, and all of our students take the test, to compare to a school where only the voucher students take the test, in my opinion, you're not comparing the same thing. So people need to really read the bills very closely, and the next few days, next few weeks are absolutely critical.
Ms. Smith?
I do have one question for you, because I think all of us would be very interested in the proposal that involved all children with IEPs and what that would mean for our schools.
There's been a clarification, and I think it came today, perhaps, that they are not sure that this really would apply to gifted, although in the state of Tennessee, gifted students are considered to be special needs students, but it is a state law. So there has been discussion about that. There has been the question of, because we are required to serve children when they turn three, there has been the question about, well, the voucher schools over here, if they don't have, if they only have kindergarten, then do we take the children and do we serve them when they're three and four, and then they go with the voucher, and then what happens at the end of that, because we also serve children until they turn 22? So what happens after that period of time when students would normally finish school? So there are just a lot of questions out there that no one has an answer to, and I do, and I am concerned that some of the bills would give the money to the parents, and it's pretty, as Bob Baker would say, willy-nilly about how that money can be used. So I question, I question that without specific regulations, without it being laid out exactly how this will work, I feel that there are just too many really unknowns out there to ensure that the children who take the vouchers, who are special needs children, will get the services they need, and I have a real problem with that as an educator.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on the resolution? We need a motion to approve the resolution?
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you.
How will it, may I ask, how will this be delivered? Is it going to be emailed, or...
I think we're going to need, and that's something, Melanie, I think, that we need to do first thing in the morning to get that, because...
Because there are votes tomorrow.
There are votes tomorrow.
What's the best way to present it to them so that they...
I always think in person with a, my mind is, resolution, sorry. I always think in person is the best way, but I'm not able to go there tomorrow. I don't know if anyone else is able to, so...
I think what we might do is tonight, if you'll forward me that resolution, what I'll do is contact them and let them know that the resolution will be delivered, that the board did approve it tonight, so they'll have the resolution there, so they'll understand what it's saying, and then we can follow up with delivery. But that way, it will be in their hands tonight, because I think that's important.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item?
The next item is under Reports and Information, and I believe you all are going to report about the NSBA conference, I think.
Correct.
So it's yours.
All right. Okay. Well, we had three members of the board who attended the conference, Mr. King, Ms. Renier, and Mr. Barrett. So just kind of give us a five or 10-minute synopsis, if you will, on what you saw, what you learned, and...
I'm ready.
All right. Ladies go first in the South, or we'll let you go first.
That's very sweet. Thank you. I attended this conference, obviously, this past weekend, and there was a session, the conference actually began on Saturday, but they have some pre-conference selections, and there was one that I really wanted to attend, so I personally paid for it because I thought it was really important. It was called "The Board's Role in Community Engagement," and I think that we really need to be focusing on that and find out things that we can do so that our community is supportive for us in case we ever have to go to city council to help us fund computers, or funding of a new school, or the supplies for that school, the materials in the building, or that we might have to go and talk to our parents about rezoning. So the community needs to be behind us. This workshop was led by two women from Illinois, and they've come up with some really easy ways to connect with the stakeholders in our neighborhoods, and they consisted of listening to and understanding their expectations. For instance, what does the community expect from the resources that they've provided to us? They also said we need to advocate for our children, as if we don't already do that, and inform the public of what's going on in our district. And they gave me a little manual, so I've got a manual full of ideas here on how to engage our community. Then Saturday's opening general session, they were supposed to have Arianna Huffington from the Huffington Post, but she was ill. So instead, she was replaced by Jane Pauli. Jane began by telling us, and let me tell you, this woman is this big and maybe this tall. She's adorable. She's just as cute as you would think that she would be. She was adorable. But anyway, she began telling us that after graduation, she had substitute taught for three weeks, and that that told her she was not cut out to be a teacher. But she said that she also apparently was cut out to parent a teacher, and that her son is now a high school English teacher in his fourth year. So that was exciting. She talked about how she got into television, and now that she's become an author of books about people reinventing themselves, and she talked about how the times are different now, and that at age 50, you have to stop and think that you have only gone halfway through your journey. So that was kind of interesting. She also said that the first person to live to be 150 years has already been born. Can you just imagine that? Jane was very complimentary of the school, public school teachers in her life and her children's lives. No, she did not send her children to a private school. After that, I attended a session called "Articulating the Purpose and the Need for School Boards." This was presented by Dr. Patrick Rice, who was another person from Illinois. I think the Illinois folks were there in large numbers. He talked about the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Eli and Edith Broad Foundation, and the Walton Family Foundation, and how they've spent over $4 billion trying to negate public schools. He spoke of how anytime a think tank is pulled together, whether it's nationally on the federal level, whether it's statewide, the people that they pull are the elected officials, the business leaders, and the philanthropists, but we are the educators. He said it is time to recapture this conversation, make it ours, and it's time to tell all the good things that happened and that we know, because we see these every day. I had the pleasure of hearing Ruby Payne again. Her session was called "Building Supportive Communities with Both the Haves and the Have-nots." She spoke of how we bring, all of us, our own ideas of how things work and how they impact, and how they impact us, our understanding of the world, and how there are hidden rules and unspoken cues. She told a couple of stories, one of which was about a story of twin high school girls who each had two outfits of clothes. They would wear one on Monday, and wear the second one on Tuesday, and had washed the first one to be ready for Wednesday. And that, one of their teachers, you know, was kind of sad about it and decided at Christmas to give them $200 so they could get some new clothes, but when school returned or resumed in January, they came back to school in the same outfits. And the teacher said she was a little puzzled and didn't understand, and asked what they spent the money on, and they bought a DVD player, because they didn't have one. So that was what was important to them. Ruby said that, of her own journey, going from a middle-class home, and then her husband became a business partner with some financial whatever on the North Shore of Chicago. Well, I lived in Chicago on the South Side. When I was born, the North Shore is just the elitist of the elite. And she said that one of her husband's business partner's wives became ill. And so thinking as most of us, middle-class, I'm assuming you're here with me, middle-class folks do, what do you do when somebody's ill? You take them food. She took her a casserole in a pretty dish, and she said, I even had my name on the bottom of my casserole dish, and she said the woman would not even touch it. She said to just go put it in the kitchen. And she was mad, because she said she never returned her dish. But she said that just showing the differences in our experiences, she said, with regard to food, in poverty, the diet is high in carbs, because they're most satisfying and filling. In the middle class, it's the quality of the food. If I offer you a meal, or we go somewhere to eat, it's, did you like it? But with the elite, they're more concerned about the presentation of the food. So it's all your perspective. Ruby's main point was that each child comes to us from a different background and point of view, and she said the business of education is about changing thinking, relationships, and knowledge, resources, and demands on the environment, and that's not only the normal terms of the environment out there, but in the child's own environment. Sunday morning's general session was presented by David Pogue, who is a specialist in technology, and this man, for 10 years, was a Broadway producer and composer, excuse me, not producer, director and composer. So he spoke of all kinds of new apps and how we actually now have the world at our fingertips, right here. And he closed, world, and is that your fingertips? You have all the knowledge. Years ago, he said there are schools now, they don't even bother to get encyclopedias, as, you know, I was in the library, so I know that, because you just Google it. You find out what you need to know. At the end of his presentation, he said he, when he was in the musical field, he liked to do little parodies. So he did a parody of Frank Sinatra's "I Did It My Way," and his ending was, "I bought an iPhone." So he liked his iPhone. After that, I went to a session also on apps. Hey Administrator, there's an app for that. And this gentleman spoke about the scope and sequencing that was developed in 1890 by the Ivy League schools, and that it's no longer relevant. So he gave us a lot of apps to use, names of new software. I think a lot of his presentation was more geared to the high schools or middle schools, because he said when doing a project, a child can go ahead and take a picture of the finished project as proof that it was completed. The next session that I attended was "Develop a Vision and Make It Work for You," and these presenters talked about how that, and I thought, oh, we're brilliant, pretty good. They talked about how they had not revisited their mission or their vision for 10 or 11 years. These people were also from Illinois. And then they explained the process that they had gone through to complete it. You might know this name, in, they said in 1983, Rick DeFour was the principal of the Stevenson High School, and this one gentleman was on the school board for that one school. Anyway, this man was the gentleman who founded PLCs, and I thought that was interesting, because we do so much work with PLCs. So there were two presenters. The gentleman was on the board for that high school. Only one, just one, nothing else. The items that they proposed just didn't, did not seem to fit our needs, so I asked about the size of their systems and their poverty level. The woman was from the board of the elementary system K through eight, and I'm unclear, I can't remember. She said they had five schools or seven schools, but it was not many more than that. Couldn't have been more than that. And the high school, just that one high school, they had a poverty rate of 2%, but he kept talking about their 100% graduation rate, and that's when I said, well, tell me about your system. And they were 2% poverty rate. The elementary system, she said, oh, but ours is much higher, and they're nearing 50%. So early Monday morning, they had an un-general session with three speakers who were each allowed 15 minutes to talk. The first one spoke of engaging the teachers, the collegiality of the teachers, how we can't do this job alone anymore, and the effects of student achievement. The second speaker was Adora Svetak. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. She's a 17-year-old young woman who is already a freshman at the University of California Berkeley. She's grateful for teachers who invested, who are invested in public education, but her belief is that high school students should be able to basically set their own programs. I thought that was pretty interesting. And this woman, this young woman is really on top of things. She's spoken everywhere already, to the committees in Washington and everywhere. The third speaker was a futurist. I don't know that I'd ever heard of a futurist before, but he said his job was to translate tomorrow, and he said, tomorrow, everything will be possible. You'll have every choice, you'll have everything, and everyone will be famous. The future belongs to everyone. The next session I went to was presented by NSBA, and is supported, we all know, by TSB. It's the Stand Up for Public Education campaign, and they talked about it, and how the first promoters of the program are Magic Johnson, Sal Khan, and Montel Williams, and how they're volunteering their time, because they're such supporters of what we, our teachers, do every day. One of the battle cries is that in the last 100 years, 80% of the population was educated in public schools. So if you want to get information, it's www.standupthemnumberforpublicschools.org, and you can get the details. I've got a lot of great ideas of things we can do here locally. And my last session yesterday was "The Impact of Student Health on Academic Achievement", a case study from one of the largest school districts in the U.S., and that was in Austin, Texas. And I thought, since I'd volunteered to help, or to sit on that Coordinated School Health Committee, that this might be advantageous for me. The gentleman who led the discussion was a professor in epidemiology and co-director of the Michael and Susan Dell Center for Healthy Living. He spoke about the longitudinal studies of children and how the effects of their health translate to better school attendance and school achievement. Their program is called CATCH, Coordinated Approach to Child Health, and it just sounded very close to what Mary Lee is doing. But the one thing that I learned is that MD Anderson Cancer Center is nonprofit. They have given this gentleman or this group $30 million in grants, and so I'm going to get this information to Mary Lee, that maybe it's something we could apply for. Early Sunday morning, there was an inspirational session. You know, you can't go to your church if you're up there, and I was lazy and stayed up there. And this woman's name was Azure Antoinette, and she is a poet laureate. She spoke about her mother who adopted her and her sister from one of the safe zone drop-off centers or places, like you can take a newly born baby to the fire station or the hospital or wherever. And that's how this young woman was adopted. She praised teachers for their role in her life, and she ended up with a poem she had written the night before for all the school board members, and I'm going to see if I can write her and get a copy of it. At the closing general session, I had just, I had just asked another person how the entertainment was chosen to come perform and whether they had to pay their own way. There were groups from other, from all around the country, and there was even a presentation by a Kennedy Center gentleman who presented an award to an Ann Arbor school, Ann Arbor, Michigan. And much to my surprise, our own Siegel High School's chamber choir performed at the closing ceremony, so they were great. Then the closing ceremony was Montel Williams. Instead of coming out on the stage, he came walking from the side and came right behind me chanting, "Mountain, get out of my way! Mountain, get out of my way!" And eventually, everybody joined in with him, and he kind of pulled that in through his talk. But he told his life story and how he was the youngest child in his family. His father worked days to provide for this family, I think he said of seven, and spent 17 years, talk about motivated, spent 17 years earning a college degree at night. And his big thing was, the family sat together for a meal every evening, and each of those children had to have looked through the dictionary, found three new words every day that they could not only pronounce, spell, know the definition of, and use in a sentence. And he said, at age of three, he had the vocabulary that most high school students sometimes now don't have. Because he was bright and could finish his assignments quickly, he had a tendency to get in a little bit of trouble, so his teachers introduced him to art, and any posters or signs that had to be done were made by him in his school. He talked about his years in the service and how he became who he is today. He said that we now, for the first time ever across this nation, have an 82% graduation rate, and that it... rate, and that it just keeps getting better. This is the best it's been, and it just keeps getting better. He praised all the public school teachers and board members for all they do for children every day. He also commented about how we hear about schools in other parts of the world. And he said, as good as we hear about the schools in Finland, where are their startups? What are they doing with their knowledge? Here, knowledge is powerful, and people use it to better themselves. He said, we all need to be proud of the job we do for children every day. Now, as I said, Montel is a proud sponsor of the Stand Up for Public Education campaign. He's making TV and radio appearances. He's volunteering his time, as are the other sponsors. And he's going to be on Dr. Oz's show, I think he said, April the 7th, to talk about things, the contract or whatever, he said, when he booked this, as Dr. Oz wants to talk to him about what's important to him. And he's going to wear the Stand Up for Schools, Stand Up for Public Schools t-shirt. So the conference was great. I learned a lot. I've got a lot of information. And next year's is going to be in Boston. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Mr. King?
Well, the one bad thing is my name's not going to be in the hat next year to get to go. But I'll go on my own. If my calendar, I've already got it on my calendar, and I enjoyed it a lot. Your book, let me borrow your book real quick. When you got there, they gave you the book, I mean, it's a pretty thick book. But I opened it up, and there were some QR codes right in here. And I took my iPad, and the moment you scanned that, it downloaded an app on your iPad, and you had access to everything. What meetings were being scheduled that day? You could pick them and choose them and put it on your schedule. And then you click another button, it would show you the map in the Music City Center. You click another button, and you could download all the handouts that you wanted to go to. And so, you know, I've got access to handouts for every, every class that they held, even the ones I didn't go to. That was really neat. When Jane Pauley spoke, now keep in mind, this is the brand-new Music City Center. Room was huge, huge. And there were so many people in there, that people were lining the walls, sitting on the floor. I was one of them. There were that many people in there. And Jane Pauley was good. I think she was a pleasant surprise. I went to one, I know I'm mispronouncing it, Pawnee, Wisconsin. Very similar school size, 7,000-something students. However, they were elementary, middle, and high school, I think one of each. They had their website was part of their thing. And I was actually looking at their website where they were doing the talking, but they were talking about the data they would sample, surveys they would take, and some of the goals they try to reach. What impressed me was, they were an employer of choice in their town. And they had that, an icon on their website. And I thought that was something nice, that that was a place people wanted to work. But they also were forthcoming about their things, like, for example, how often do they have a technology breakdown? And how long does it take us to fix the laptop, for example? That data was out there, that people could look at, and the community could look at, see how they were doing. Not just test scores, but stuff, how they ran their schools. I thought that was pretty interesting. Later that night, the last session I went to was a presentation of different schools in different countries, India, China, and Finland. And I've got the photographs, I've got the presentations. What stood out to me, in India, they, yes, they have kind of a pre-k or pre-kindergarten, but the poor kids, if they don't know their letters and their ABCs, when it's time, they don't get to go to school. And if they learn their letters and numbers, but they're five and six years old, they don't get to go to school. You're too big, you're too old, we don't want you. And they turn them away. And they wonder why they got poverty like they do. So they set, these people set up their own school to take these kids, these castoffs. And it was kind of funny what they said, before they even started teaching. Made sure they had clothes, shoes, and got fed. And I kind of chuckled, it was breakfast in the classroom. But they took care of those needs, and then they went teaching. But in India, you've got to decide around the eighth grade what you're going to do. And girls can only be a seamstress or a cosmetologist, and that's it. And what did we see tonight? A third grader coming here to show us how to do a PowerPoint presentation. What did we see last week? Kids in robotics. In India, girls have no chance. And at age 13, they can get married. Well, they're supposed to be 18. But the person said, if you ask these girls, and it's obvious she's not 18, her answer is, my parents say I'm 18. It's awful, you know? India. China, the lady, they went and visited a bunch of schools. But what stood out to her, well, a bunch of things. Everywhere they went, she said, we had non-potable water, couldn't drink the water. Then when they visited a new school, what was the gift they gave them? Bottle water. Even in the four- and five-star hotels, bottled water. There were pictures of the classrooms. And what stood out to me was, she said, all they're building, they're building like crazy in China. And I thought, was that because they're growing? She said, because all their new stuff is crumbling. It's crap. Just pitiful. And I was sitting there thinking, what, a one-year, three-year, five-year, 10-years? Let's say it's 10-years-old, and they're having to rebuild it because it's that bad. And what did we talk about last week or two? We got a 50-year-old school that we're adding on to, and there's not a thing wrong with that 50-year-old school, other than we're adding on to make more room. Black Fox is 25-years-old. Not a thing wrong with it, we're adding on to it. And in China, they have to rebuild because their buildings fall apart, the new ones. In some of the photographs, the kids are crammed together in a little room. And when you look at the picture, they're not sitting in chairs, they're sitting on stools. They have no backs. They can't sit back, they have to lean on their desk. And the kids are wearing coats because they have no heat. And they have no computers, nothing. It's all paper and pencil. A little like something out of the, I was thinking about this today, out of the 80s at best. Because when did we get cell phones and computers? Maybe the 90s? You know, if it were not a color photograph, you'd have thought it was taken a long time ago. And that was China. This is the country they say is going to overtake us. You've got to be kidding me. Those kids have to decide by the eighth grade, give or take, what they want to do with their life. And once they make that decision, no changing it. And if they can't pass certain tests, they basically get put in the hospitality industry. And there's a photograph I've got of kids that look no more than junior high, behind the bar, mixing drinks. That's their life. And in Finland, had a very low poverty rate, low immigration, and was ranked in the top not long ago in math, in science, and one other thing, I think, literature reading or something, tops in the world, for whatever assessment it was, they were the best, or one of the best. And you know what happened? Cut funding, took the foot off the gas, and they tumbled in the rankings. Kids didn't want to take math and science. And then Nokia came in and said, we've got to have a bunch of engineers, and took the focus off of other things to meet the demand of one employer in the country. Because Nokia threatened the government that they were going to pack up and leave if they didn't have enough scientists, or engineers, or what have you. But what I found interesting about Finland was, you would envy them because of their test scores, how these people got it going on. And the moment they got it going, they lost their focus. One of the last ones I want to mention was a guy from Harvard. Excellent handouts. And you know, talking about losing your focus, he had great presentations on what to do for setting goals, if you will, or how to measure your goals so that you get where you want to go. I mean, and his presentation was very detailed. And what was interesting was, he had a survey, and very basic. Do you do this, yes or no? And you'd take your phone, and you'd text your answer. And so, live on the screen, where you could see the results. And he said, this idea of anonymously voting like this was kind of gaining favor, because that way people could vote how they wanted to do. And this, he meant this was going on in a lot of places. But it was interesting to see what the other people in the room, how they judged what their goals that they had for their district was. But I've got the Harvard stuff. It's very detailed. It is not an easy read. It's not hard, but it'll take you some time to go through it. And if I can, I'm going to go next year, no matter what.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Barrett, last, but certainly not least.
And they've already done a pretty thorough job. I'm not going to touch on the speakers, since Nancy did a good job on that. But I went to, the first one I went to, and this is my third year going, and I've had the pleasure, and I appreciate everybody supporting me, able to go to these things. And I always bring back the information. But the first one I went to was 10 Questions Every School Board Member Should Ask. And this guy was very energetic, he even had a book. And you can, I bought a copy, it was pretty inexpensive. But, and I'll just read them real quick, but one, these are the 10 questions. He said, what is the purpose of a school board? Ask yourself that. Why did you decide to run for the school board? I think we've all asked ourselves that at one point. Do you have a vision for public education? And a lot of people do ask yourself that. Does what you measure matter? And we've had discussions on that, I know we have. Do you demonstrate commitment to education improvement? Do you prioritize leadership development? Is your board united? Do you take advantage of your resources? Do you share your vision for education with the community? And the last one was, what can you do now? So you're always asking, what can you do in the future? So he was very energetic, just had a lot of good ideas. And I sent that to you as a link, all the presentations I went to. So if you want to look at those in more detail, you can. The next presentation I went to was a little heartbreaking, but it was prepare for the worst, hope for the best, and it's becoming disaster-ready. And this was from, they were from Moore, Oklahoma, and they had the tornadoes that went through there. And it was the School Board Association, they actually went and interviewed the superintendent from that school district, and showed pictures and things like that. And just, you know, all the things that you could do to prepare yourself for those kinds of disasters. And it just got me thinking, you know, we had our Good Friday tornado years ago, and then the school, was it Lincoln County, that elementary school got hit by a tornado? And it just got me thinking, you know, maybe we need to revisit that at some point, our policies about what to do in an emergency, how we handle emergencies. And I got the information for that, and they had a lot of good things. So maybe at some point in the future, we can sit down at another time and do that. I think that'd be a great idea for us as a board to do that. Next one I went to, I went to the same one Phil did, actually, we didn't even know we were in the same room. Around the world, the India, China, Finland, and Cuba. It was actually Cuba, but she wasn't there. But she had a handout. But the one thing from India that really struck me was, they showed a picture of a pot-billy pig in this lot, and it was full of trash, and then the slum sitting next to it. And they were talking about building a $400,000 elementary school. And we're getting ready, you know, we just built a $20 million elementary school. So I thought, wow. You know, that was the big difference right there in cost. But that was very informative, and Phil did a good job of covering that. Next one I went to, and I'm going to pass this down so you can look at it. Becoming a Professional Governance Board. And they were out of Connecticut. And it's just a board member handbook. And it doesn't replace policy, it's just an easier way to have everything in one place for us as a board. And they actually made it publicly available for everybody, for the public. And they actually encouraged candidates that ran for school board to pick it up and read it. And I just thought that was a good resource, and maybe that's something we want to think about doing at some point in the future. It's just an easy place for everything to be, you know? We always talk about certain things, and we just got done talking about reimbursement policy, things like that. Maybe that doesn't need to be in there, but it's just a nice little resource to have. Another thing I went to, and Phil was there too, the Data Savvy versus Data Dangerous. They were from Kansas. And it was just some of the questions you can ask of your data, how to dig deeper into it. You know, we always get our T-VOS scores and TCAP testing results. And they just said, you know, yeah, you get that, but what kind of other questions can you ask besides these kinds of demographics? Is there any other questions we could ask that maybe go dig deeper into it, get some results? So that was actually a pretty interesting one, it was very stimulating, you know, kind of questions we could ask in the future. And then the last one I went to was the Community and Student Engagement Accountability. And this was out of Texas. And it was interesting, I asked, I said, was this something that you as a board asked your legislators to do? And they said, no, it was kind of a compromise. Basically, it's a way to be accountable, to measure other things besides testing in your district. So you look at each individual, for example, they were looking at each individual school. And if you look at the example I sent, they had like all these different questions that you could ask, like, how many art presentations do you have at your school every year? And they had a set standard for every school that, this was the minimum that your school should be doing, you know, we expect your school to be doing. If you do above this, then you're doing above what our district is asking your school to do. If you're not doing that, then you're going below it. And it's not apples to apples, it was actually apples to oranges. Each district could develop their own program on how to do this, which I thought was kind of interesting in a way. But then, how do you know how you're comparing to other districts? But it seems like this was a tool more for the district level. But again, it was just questions you could ask, and see where your, and see where your individual schools are doing. And then you could, another way you could focus on it is, you could pick one or two, two or three of those areas and focus on those to get better. You don't have to focus on the whole thing, that's impossible. But maybe you can focus like science and art, and take those two areas and really put your resources toward. And one of them was like PTA, PTO development, or, you know, how do you engage your community? And they were talking about 6% participation from parents. I was like, that seems pretty low. And they were hoping for 10% for next year, when they asked their community for input. So I know we went through that a couple of years ago when we did our, I can't remember what it was. But I went to one of the meetings, we had one parent show up. So I can understand where they got the 6% from. But, you know, it's just one of those things we need to work on, we're always working on, trying to get parents involved, trying to get our public involved. But overall, and positive experience, I recommend, I probably won't be able to go next year, it seems like we, you know, we're going to pass this policy. But I encourage you, if you have not gone, I encourage you to go. You learn a lot, you can bring things back to the district, it gets you thinking about different things, questions you can ask. And it's a valuable resource, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent job by each one of you. Very good. And I think we've got well-represented, and we've got some really good ideas. It sounded like y'all enjoyed and learned a lot as well. Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. Preschool registration dates?
Yes, the next two are really more information, and information for you, and also information for the public. But we are having preschool registration. Those dates will be on Thursdays in April, except for the first Thursday, which will be spring break. So April 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th, from 8:30 until 3:30, we will be holding registration at the central office. And so those will be the dates. There's information on the website. And also, our choice schools, our controlled choice schools, Bradley, Hobgood, and Mitchell-Nelson, the application time for those schools, April 6th through May 1st. And there, again, is more information on the website about those. They can apply at the central office, or apply to the school that they wish to attend. And they should be getting an acceptance letter on or before May 13th. And those schools are, the acceptance is contingent upon having rooms, having room in the schools. But we did meet with the principals and feel comfortable with that process.
I'm sorry, did you say acceptance letters by May 15?
On or before May 13th.
13th, okay, thanks.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, the next section is on your financial piece. And we're at 2/3 of the way through our fiscal year. We are now starting to build our cash reserves to get us through the summertime when we get no state money that comes in at all. We're up $2,215,000. Last year, at this time, we were down in the whole $55,000. So we're feeling, you know, pretty good about that. On the revenue side, we're right at 67.7% of revenues received. And the really good news, the sales tax collections are up $413,000 over last year at this time, which is excellent news that the economy is doing very well here. And property tax collections are keeping pace with where they were last year, too. They're within a few thousand dollars. So that's also good news. On the state money, the BEP money, as you know, we did receive growth money. The growth money is established on four marking periods, accounting periods, they're 20-day periods. And they use the two, the second month, third month, sixth month, and seventh month. Well, the first half of the payment that you receive is based on the second and third month, because it's before the, before the end of the calendar year. And we were told that we would receive approximately $800, a little over $800,000. Well, our sixth and seventh month are above those. So I'm hoping when they do readjust at the end of the year, and they adjust either upwards or downwards for the second half of your payment. So I'm very hopeful that we'll receive additional money because we're just now hitting our sixth and seventh month. So we're glad to see that. On the expenditure side, we have expended 60.3% at this time. On the expenditure side, we have expended 60.3% at this time. Last year, at this time, we were at 67.6%, but a lot of that was because of the technology that we bought last year, and it's a timing issue on that. But overall, we're in good shape in our budget at this time. Anyone have any questions on, through that period? Okay, the next piece is on our enrollment numbers, and it is the end of the sixth period, which ended on February 26th, and we are keeping our pupil teacher ratio extremely low. Our K through 3 is at 19.56 to 1, fourth through 6 is 21.02. Our average district-wide is 20.07 to 1. As you know, the cold and flu season, this was the February report, so we were at 96%, which is still excellent. Of course, we're hoping as the spring comes on, we will get our number back up to 97, but anything above 95 is considered good. Overall, we're at 8,037 students, when you count all of our pre-K and our special ed students. Anyone have any questions on that one? By the way, overall, CREEC continues to grow. We know we've got more students than is on this report, because this report ended in February, so we're continuing to grow there, of course.
When I look at the fourth grade in overall CREEC, and I see a pupil teacher ratio of 26.75, that is concerning to me.
That one, we actually talked with Mr. Barge, and as you know, with principals, sometimes having a teacher is not necessarily what they want to do in the middle of the year, because they have to split the class, and that was his decision. So what he did want, though, is an EA to help with that, and we were able to do that. So that's the reason those numbers are there.
Good. Yeah, that's high. And what, we lost 12 students overall across the system, I think?
From the previous accounting.
Yeah, previous month?
Yes, sir.
Which is not bad.
No, it'll fluctuate up and down.
Yeah.
Instead of gaining 52, or whatever it was.
Okay. All right, any questions on revenue or enrollment, personnel, attendance? All right. Other business coming before this board? Ms. Smith?
I have two things. One is, I thought yesterday was the parent-teacher conference day, system-wide, and I got a really great deal of positive feedback from parents about the student-led parent-teacher conferences. And I personally thought it was wonderful, because the children were sharing what they thought, how they were achieving, and then the teacher shows how she thinks they are achieving, and I thought it was a very rewarding experience.
Thank you. I'll pass that word, because that's something that our teachers are moving toward, and it's a real proven strategy, and it does help with, not only with relationships, a lot of times, between the students and their parents, but the student ownership is just very powerful.
I heard many parents complimenting that. And the other thing is that my child participated along with many other Murphy's University School children yesterday, because they did have the day off, in the free tennis clinic that was sponsored by MTSU. So I want to thank coaches Bourne, Dame, and Godwin for hosting that. Every member of the women's tennis team and the men's tennis team helped conduct the clinics. And of course, in addition to the physical activity, every one of those players is from another country. So the kids were exposed to people and learned about different cultures at the same time as getting out on a beautiful day. So I appreciate MTSU for hosting that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else coming before this board tonight? We were talking about budget and stuff, and I looked over at Mr. Washington in city council, and I just want to tell you, we certainly do appreciate the effort and the work that you do on our behalf with the city council, and appreciate you being here at our meetings and talking with us and listening to us, we really do. You're an integral part.
Glad to do it. Take seven of us.
Budget meeting, April the 6th, 5:30, that is at the central office, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything else coming before this board? To have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Did you find out? Did it pass? Yeah. Was that great?